One special school board meeting. Uh, it is six P M. And I will call the meeting to order. Uh, we will start with a roll call. Uh, Jim Bryant.
Here.
Uh, Nikki Buck.
Here.
Arlen Derricks.
Here.
Uh, Anna Ostendorf.
Here.
Holly Tower.
Here.
Jennifer Titt.
Here.
And Pam Rowe is here. All seven board members are here along with Superintendent Anderson, and we'll go ahead and uh, stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation. A nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, everybody. I'll ask, uh, Anna if she would share our, our mission this evening.
Alright. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Our meeting agenda has been posted, and because this is a special meeting, there can be no changes to our agenda this evening. So it uh, will remain as posted. So the first order of business is an update on the return to school plan, and I will turn that over to Superintendent Anderson for more information.
Uh, thank you. Uh, what we will do is break this into two sections. First of all, talk about teaching and learning for grades seven through twelve, and then we'll talk about teaching and learning for grades five through six. George Nemnich is first in the queue to discuss some things that they've been working with teachers on in the, in the last few days or weeks.
So, uh, I am going to, uh, present a, uh, we've been working on kind of a plan to, um, discuss, um, a, um, uh, a way to help our students who are online only. And I'm going to present that, uh, just, uh, so you can see what we're. I'll get this, uh. Can you see that? Are you guys able to see the screen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, good.
Um, just blow it up a little bit, George.
Okay. Whoop, did, did that help or no? Trying to get it to the, sorry. Okay. Whoops. Sorry.
If you go to where it says a hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm.
There you go.
There we go. Yep. Alright, how's that?
Better.
Better, okay. Um, alright, so. One thing we've been looking at, uh, basically since the year started, uh, is a way, uh, with hybrid learning. Uh, and I, I know we have, uh, the, uh, we're looking at returning to hybrid here soon. Um, this, this has been kind of a, uh, an issue ongoing throughout the year is how difficult the format is, and I know you've all heard about that, and you've probably experienced it if you've got, uh, kids in the, in the hybrid model. Um, one thing that's particularly difficult for our, uh, uh, our students is that, um, the, uh, when they're online only, they don't get quite the, uh, attention that the students who are coming into the classroom and are, are, uh, are in the classroom twice a week get. And so what we would really like to do is, uh, get all students choosing distance learning on a learning platform, uh, one platform, uh, to increase that learning and, and student engagement, because we have found that there are many students who are online only that are really struggling. And we felt that a way to do this was through, uh, Edgenuity, which is an online platform that we recently went to over the summer. And I know s- some of you are aware of, of Edgenuity because uh, we do have students that are Edgenuity students, uh, only, and they take their classes through, uh, the, uh, Edgenuity platform from the Edgenuity teachers, so that, that company's teachers. What we're proposing is that we utilize Edgenuity for our own, uh, purposes within our district. So utilizing the curriculum, but utilizing our teachers for it. Um, and like I said, the reasoning behind this was that we, we, uh, uh, students will res- we felt that students would receive a higher quality of education at Red Wing. High school teachers would be able to focus, uh, more on the hybrid and in-person students. Uh, and, and so that would increase engagement in all formats, not just in the online-only students, but also within the, uh, uh, the in-person and the online students within the hybrid. So what we were hoping to do, our daily plan was, uh, uh, basically would look like this. Students would sign in if they were in Edgenuity, and what we're proposing is that the Edgenuity students would, um, we would pr- we would basically be signing up all of our online-only students for Edgenuity classes. Now, I'll get into a couple of uh, scenarios where some of our students, even though they were Edgenuity, or they're online-only students, might still have, um, uh, some Red Wing High School classes. I'm gonna talk about that here a little bit later, but an Edgenuity student, uh, would start their day, uh, signing in, taking attendance, just like every other student at nine-ten. And our, our Edgenuity facilitators would review attendance. Students would, uh, obviously sign into their accounts and would start their work. Uh, students would be completing daily lessons and assignments during the school day. And at some point during the school day, just would check their, uh, with their Edgenuity facilitator in a small group to check their progress. And, uh, the, and the facilitator would open or activate an assessment, uh, once progress had been verified. This also gives students an opportunity for peer-to-peer interaction. Uh, once that student, uh, once that unit is completed, uh, the, uh, um, and assessed, the, the next unit is opened and work continues. Uh, the method of learning is very self, very much self-paced. Uh, so they can go faster or slower than the traditional, uh, in-person learning, or even the online learning that's, that we've been doing. Uh, as I said, uh, because of student, uh, student can go at their own pace. Currently, uh, we have a number of students, uh, who are distance-only, as you know. Uh, right now, seven-twelve, we have about three-hundred-and-forty-three students who are distance-only learners. Uh, it might be closer to three-twenty-five, starting second semester, although we've had a number of students, uh, selecting back into, um, the distance-only option here recently, as of a few, uh, last few days. So it, it, it may end up being a similar number to three-forty-three. We, as I mentioned before, we would wanna staff this with our, with our own teachers. So how many do we need? Well, we need, uh, we, we felt we needed with, with the number of students who are distance-only learners, we felt we needed at least two full-time facilitators. Um, so, uh, the instruction and, and assignments and assessments and grading would be administered automatically online, or by our Edgenuity facilitators, and also teachers of record. So what teachers of record would be, uh, these would be licensed staff members who are currently teaching in our building. And they would have, um, they, they would be, uh, the teachers of record for different classes for these students. So world language and English language arts, for instance, are two content areas that we know, uh, may need more feedback. Um, just based on some of the, uh, information we've gained from other school districts that are doing this. Um, and, uh, just our own, uh, night school uses this, uh, format as well. So learning that, we know that, for instance, uh, students in world language, English language arts, also math, uh, may need more feedback or help, and of course, we'd wanna allow for that. Um, and so that's where our, our high school teachers would be able to assist in feedback. So how would we do, we, we basically felt we could, if we, we could do this with twelve staff members, uh, who worked five hours a week, um, in, uh, in either morning sessions or afternoon, or one or the other. Um, uh, and, and they would be the ones who would help facilitate and assist, uh, the, uh, uh, students with their work and also assign grades. They would be the teachers of record. In this way, we save a cost, because if we did this, uh, with Edgenuity only, and we currently have twenty-three students in the, uh, the district that have, uh, they are taking Edgenuity classes through that company. Uh, the, the company provides the teachers, but we pay, uh, a pretty high price for that. Uh, you might call it tuition, you might, uh, for each student. Uh, the, in this manner, we would only be paying our, our teachers, uh, who we currently have, we'd be, uh, using them, uh, to help facilitate this, so it would cost much less to the district. So for instance, uh, our Edgenuity facilitators, depending on who we would hire in this role, uh, and it's gonna come out of our own staff, uh, this could be, um, uh, you know, we could be looking at something, uh, for instance, at a, uh, uh, as low as a step-one lane one, we could be going as high as, um, uh, you know, basically, uh, something around eighty-eight thousand dollars. Okay? Um, but if it's coming off of our staff already, we may not have, that may, that may be a sunk cost. Uh, the content teachers, the twelve teachers that, that we were talking about, like I said, up to five hours a week. And we averaged this out to about forty-eight thousand, uh, dollars, because we took the highest step in lane. Uh, not all of our teachers are gonna be at that, but, uh, just to be conservative, we, we went with that approach. And if you went with an hourly overt, an hourly overage of their contracted time, it would come out to about forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, in that, in that, um, scenario. So exceptions, uh, s- remember I mentioned that some students would still take, uh, online only. They'd be online-only students in Red Wing High School classes. Here are the three exceptions. Uh, students taking a course for college credit, uh, whether it's college in the schools, concurrent enrollment, those type of classes. They would continue in that course outside of Edgenuity. If a student is enrolled in an elective, uh, that Edgenuity does not offer, the student, uh, can continue to take that class through Red Wing High School. Uh, all A P classes, um, would be, uh, we would continue to have them taught by our Red Wing High School teachers in the regular, uh, A P class. So as I mentioned, uh, the, the questions that come up, uh, what is the cost and hourly overload for teachers, uh, when needed, and ex, uh, and the extra pay to the Edgenuity facilitator, so, uh, we were looking at, like I said, the hourly rate is based off of a hundred-and-ninety-three-day, uh, assignment, so. Um, and our highest rate would be forty-seven-seventy-five an hour. Uh, if, not all of them are gonna be that high, but, um, the Edgenuity facilitator, uh, obviously, we would prorate for, uh, the second semester. Uh, it could be higher than step-one lane one, as I mentioned, so we, we would go forty-one thousand to about eighty thousand, somewhere in there. Uh, a second question here, can students focus on one class at a time versus four at a time? Uh, they have to enroll and register as a full-time student, but they could complete one at a time if they finish all four courses in the quarter, uh, that they are enrolled. Okay, so they could, they could complete one at a time as long as they finish those four courses. Um, and that, that's, that might be amenable to many students, uh, uh, and, and might be a reason why this is better than having a, a full load, and see, it might seem overwhelming to a student. And then, uh, another thing that, uh, another thing that came up here, will, will students or families lose connections with Red Wing High School? That's a big one. Uh, no, uh, we will schedule daily and every other day, small group sessions during the school day to meet the, with the Red Wing High School Edgenuity facilitators. So this will give students a chance to see an adult from Red Wing High School, and then they'll also have live peer-to-peer interactions as well. So, uh, with that, take that off. So you got, I, I know there's a lot of questions that you might have. I, I know I kinda ran through that a bit fast, but, um, um, does anybody have questions?
George, this is Pam. I have a question right off the bat. How much would you say total this is gonna cost if we do this?
Well, it, it, it may, it may depend on how, who gets, ends up getting hired for the facilitators, 'cause that's, that's what's gonna be probably the biggest cost. Uh, are those dates, the, the during-the-day facilitators? And that could range, uh, from forty-one thousand to, it could, uh, range to as much as eighty-eight, you know, eighty-eight thousand, or, you know, we, we're not sure. Uh, somewhere in there. It all depends on who we end up, uh, hiring.
Alright, Nikki has her hand raised, and then Anna.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just gonna say it. This chaos is me, and I feel like, woo! There's a lot of, okay, I'm just gonna go with my questions. Aren't the teachers already struggling with the students they have now with no help? Um, so how are we gonna expect them to keep? Hold on, I'm gonna pass on that one.
Okay.
Okay, so, huh, so we're gonna have two Edgenuity teachers for the high school for the distance learning only, correct?
Mm-hmm.
For, for approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-five students, correct? At the minimum.
Yeah, no, we're, we're gonna have, so, uh, so one of the things, it, it, there's, there's a lot here, that's why, so I, I completely understand your, uh, um, kind of, you know, the, the, the chaos you said, I, I get that, so. Um, so one thing with, uh, with Edgenuity, uh, it's, uh, we have a ratio that we wanna keep at forty to one. The twelve teachers that I mentioned that would be working an hourly over it, uh, would be the teachers of record. They're the ones who are going to be, uh, helping with the resources, uh, you know, being resources to our kids. Um, and those, those are the teachers of record. Now, they, that's, uh, there's twelve of them, so that would, that's well over the, uh, forty-to-one ratio that, that, uh, um, we were, we were told we needed. Um, so I, I think it turns out it's some, something in the high twenties, I think, is twenty-eight. So we're in good, uh, good stead there. The Edgenuity facilitators, the two teachers that we would have in that capacity are, uh, they're basically, uh, taking attendance, facilitating the meetings with students to kinda keep up, keep tabs with them. Um, that's, they're, they're kinda doing a little bit different job than the teachers of record, and that are doing the resource work, uh, on the front end of the day and back end of the day. So I don't know if that helps explain that. So really, it's a total of fourteen, uh, teaching staff that would be involved with them.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna say this right now, and I'm, and I'm gonna be firm on this throughout my entire stay on this board. That is way too many children per adults. Now, me as A D H D, I needed one adult to sit by me. You know, I, the forty-to-one, and then the fourteen for three-twenty-five to keep track of all of them, I, I just, I, whoo! I'm just gonna leave it at that for what I have to say.
It, it's a different type of learning, though. Uh, I, and that's, and that's the thing that I think, um, it's not like a classroom. Uh, you, you have to understand, this is, this is, uh, online learning, so it's, it's a, uh, it's a different platform altogether. Um, the students are really working on, uh, through Edgenuity's, uh, uh, curriculum. I- i- they're not, they're not, um, uh, gonna be working in a, uh, a classroom with other students or anything like that, and they'll be, they'll be, uh, uh, getting that, um, that touch from the, uh, the facilitator, uh, and, uh, the facilitators that we're, we're gonna hire. So I, I think it, it's, it's, it's hard to wrap your head around it, 'cause it's very different than what we're used to. But I, but I think, um, it, so I, I, I totally understand your trepidation. Uh, I just, y- y- you have to think of it a little bit differently than a normal school situation. So the, the student-to-teacher ratio is, is well below forty-to-one, but, and, and then, uh, also, a- and it's more in line with what our, what our normal classes are like. Um, but beside the, beside that point, we don't have, uh, as, the, the mean for, um, the teacher, uh, is a little bit different online. So if that makes sense.
It does, but I'm gonna stop you right there, because I went through school in tenth grade, getting out at ten-thirty. So I was already a hybrid plan myself, back in ninety, up until ninety-eight. So I understand a different structure, and I learned very differently. You give me something, I will self. Not everybody is that way. So that's why I express my extreme concerns about the too-many students-to-adult ratio.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm not sure, here's another thing that, that, that we have to consider. I'm not sure, uh, how many students are gonna want this option. I mean, we may have students who are online only right now and, and, uh, are taking classes from Red Wing, uh, High School, that may not want this option and may wanna go back into the hybrid. So we're not, we're not sure right now exactly how many students that might be. Uh, that will depend on, on, uh, you know, um, moving forward, I guess, and, and figuring that out.
Um, why can't we involve the teachers? Why can't we have them set up plans and help give ideas, generate? I just, like I said, I represent a lot of your students in your school, even as an adult. And I am caressed right now, just even by listening to the plan.
Hmm. Yeah, I, I understand. I, 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 I mean, on, on first blush, this is a lot of stuff. I get it, I do. And that's actually why I think when you look at, um, the plan itself, uh, two big concerns that I still have are, one, uh, the, uh, um, the time that we have, uh, is tight. I, I will totally admit that, and, and I, um, and then, two, is the scale, and, and, and Nikki, you kinda referenced that with the number of students, so. Those are two reasons why, if, if we move forward, I'm probably gonna recommend that we maybe look at doing this for a fourth quarter, rather than doing it, uh, uh, right now in the third quarter, because I don't think we're gonna have the, the kinda time or, um, or the, uh, um, uh, you know, the resources to get this done in, in a, in a timely fashion, where we could make it work. Uh, but you're, you're right. I mean, we've, uh, we did talk to our teachers about it today. Uh, we did have some, uh, teachers who were, had some, uh, concerns. So, uh, we're definitely gonna be looking at that. Um, you know, moving forward. I guess what I wanted to do is let you know that we're working on some things here to try to make hybrid a better, uh, uh, situation for everybody, and we're really looking at, our big concern right now is, uh, as we move back, one, we wanna make our, our classrooms more engaging. Uh, so the, the in-person classrooms more engaging than they've been. Uh, and I know that's, that's very difficult when you have, uh, students online as well as in-person. Um, and, and then that third group, which is that online-only group, they, i- i- it's, it's almost even more of a struggle. Some students don't have a problem with it, because they're very, uh, they're good students, and they, they don't have problems with the, uh, um, they're, they're tech-savvy, and they, they like that type of learning, but there's a lot of students that don't necessarily, uh, do well in that venue, and we wanted to create a platform that was a little bit more consistent, something that would give our, uh, our, our teachers and oper- our, our, our Edgenuity folks that work within that platform to help our students, uh, more consistently than, say, a classroom teacher can, uh, when they also have to worry about the in-person and the, the, uh, the other students who are online but will be in-person later in a week.
Okay, thank you, George. When you mentioned that this isn't gonna be a third quarter, but more or less a fourth quarter, that made me breathe a little bit easier. So I appreciate that, thank you. And, um, another one, do I call you George, or do I call you Mr. Nemnich?
Whatever you're most comfortable with.
I, I don't know the proper, because I had you in high school, and now I'm back into the proper scene again, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you could call me George, that's fine.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so thank you for that, um, explanation on that, so that could give us time to maybe.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I should've probably mentioned that upfront. I, 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 uh, I wanted to get to the plan so fast, and I was excited about it, but I, I wanted to, I probably should've mentioned that upfront as well.
Okay.
And, and we, you know, it, it's, uh, really, it's, it's something we've worked on, and here's the reason we weren't able to do it earlier in the, uh, school year, is becau- and, and credit Goodhue County Ed, uh, they, uh, uh, Brian Cashman put together, uh, 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 he, he worked out a deal with Edgenuity, so that we could have this, uh, platform available to our students without having to pay the extra tuition, even if we were using our own teachers. Last fall, when we looked at this, we were gonna have to pay, you know, a, 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 kind of a, a tuition price, just to use the, the curriculum, even if it was with our own teachers. And that, um, and that was something that, uh, it just was cost-prohibitive. Uh, you know, we were talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it just wasn't gonna work. But then, uh, when, uh, uh, Brian made the, uh, uh, the deal with, uh, Edgenuity, and, uh, this was not, not just for Red Wing, but also for all the county schools in the Ed District, um, it really worked to our advantage, so we thought, oh, this is something we could really, really try. So, so that's, uh, that's what we were looking at, and we put this plan together, and originally, we did look at third, uh, doing something third quarter. But in recent days, we've had some struggles, uh, just kinda with, like I said, the real issues are time and, and the scale of this. And the scale, I hate to say it, but seven-twelve, we've got, uh, almost twenty-five, that's up, represents almost twenty-five percent of our, uh, our student population, so that's a pretty big number, uh, and, and to, uh, when, when we've basically got third quarter coming up in two weeks. So, um, so that's why we, we wanted to, uh, look at it, though, from the, uh, um, you know, moving forward, this is something maybe we'd like to implement fourth quarter, in part because this is, uh, I think something, as we move forward, we wanna kind of keep as a, an option for our students in years to come. So we wanna kinda use it as maybe a pilot, that, that fourth quarter will be our pilot time to, uh, develop this. So, but in, in the meantime, what, what delaying it to the fourth quarter does, it gives us a chance to obviously work with our staff, but then also, uh, our, uh, our parents and students, uh, and see what they would wanna do, what, what, what would work best for them.
Well, and I appreciate the, uh, the idea and the, the plan this board has asked for administration to come up with some options to help alleviate some of that stress, especially for the five and six, um, grade teachers, um, and, and we were asking for options, so this is one option that I appreciate you presenting. We've got Anna, and then Jennifer, Jim, and Karsten, so you've got a whole lineup there, George, but, uh, Anna first.
That's okay. That's okay.
Uh, so you did already answer one of my questions of how soon you wanted to start, and I agree with Nikki that, you know, looking at fourth quarter makes me breathe a little bit easier, and I think a lot of the teachers who have concerns would also appreciate that, just that it gives us a little more time to work out the details. Um, so, one of my questions, um, I actually have a kid who's doing all of her online school through Edgenuity. Um, so she's already doing that. How many students are already doing Edgenuity only, do you know? And then, And then how would this change what their options are? Because right now, she doesn't log in at nine-ten. She can start school at seven-thirty in the morning. She can start school at noon. She's totally on her own for that type of, um, framework. So would this change that or what's your plan for that?
Uh, no, I, I, you know, we're committed to those students, uh, doing, I mean, they, they committed early on in the school year to, that they were gonna do the, uh, the Edgenuity. And so I think, I think that's, at least, you know, from my standpoint, I would say we're committed to that, those students to finish the year out in that manner. So, um, and I think, I, to answer that question, I think it's twenty-three, I wanna say. Uh, and I'm not sure if that's seven-twelve or is that district-wide? I guess Jess, Jess is on, I, I don't know, uh, if that's just for seven-twelve or is that seven? Oh, it's district-wide, okay. Twenty-three.
And so, you know, this isn't as much a, a question, but a comment, I guess, is just, you know, I think it would maybe be helpful in that, in this next quarter of working out those details to talk to those kids who are currently using that and, um, you know, kind of get their feedback about how it's going. Um, I know we've done some surveys, but, um, not as much. And most of the surveys are coming to me as a parent where, um, she knows much more what her day. You know, as the tenth grader looks like than me. Um, and then, so my, my question then is, um, how do you see this helping teachers with the synchronous learning? So if we're taking out the kids who are distance only, how is this, is this gonna help at all with having to still, when we're in a hybrid model, be teaching the students who are at home on their Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday, as well as the kids who are in person? Like, is this helping that situation at all or how do you see that fit in?
I think it would help. So the reason we looked into this, that, that's a great question. Uh, the reason we looked into it was that, uh, our staff was, um, I, I kept hearing from our staff through the fall and into the winter, that they really struggle in, in, uh, connecting with those kids online, uh, that, that are online only. Like, like that was a, it was like a third group that they kept referencing that was just making things very difficult to administer to all this, you know, these different formats at the same time. And so that's why, that's why we really came up with the idea. And that's, again, why I thought about it back in the fall. Uh, it was to alleviate that, that, uh, struggle, you might say. Uh, now, in saying that, um, I know that, um, you know, over time, you kind of, you can overcome some of your obstacles and things. But I still think, in the end, I think most of our teachers had, had said, to me anyway, when I was talking with them, that would, that, that that would be helpful to not have to worry about that particular group. Uh, if we had a different format for them, you know, um, but, you know, I, I, I know that, uh, people get attached to their students too. So, uh, so they might have different answers than what they tell me. So I, I don't know. Uh, but that was my impression. Uh, I know some of you got, received feedback, uh, different. Uh, but I, I, I will say, I, the, when I've talked to staff, that was a big concern of theirs.
Thanks, Anna. And George, we've got Jennifer and then Jim.
Okay.
Um, first of all, thank you for taking these concerns seriously and coming back with a proposal. Um, I too feel much better, uh, knowing that you're thinking fourth quarter rather than third quarter. Um, I think Anna and Nikki both touched on a few of my concerns. But, um, one of the things I wanted to emphasize was just the idea of maybe, um, talking to the students. That Anna said, not just the Edgenuity students, but those that are in, um, distance learning right now. And, um, you know, we only have twenty-three in Edgenuity, so that's three hundred students that this would be something completely new for them. And they had the option of choosing Edgenuity initially, did not choose that. So I think it would be important to go back and figure out why they did not choose that. Um, my guess is that they felt like the distance learning through Red Wing High School would connect them more to the high school. And so that kind of leads to my other concern that, um, I know you had said that they would be able to check in with teachers. And I appreciate that and I think that's a great idea. Um, but I still worry that those kids will be disconnected from the high school. And I think some of the students that have already chose full distance learning, um, feel disconnected from the high school. Um, and that's one of the reasons they chose that. And so I would hate to further push them out of the community. Um, so I just think that needs to be in the back of our minds. Um, but I appreciate this as a starting point and something to talk about. And I, I, I think it's, um, a good idea as long as it's brought forward to some of these stakeholders, as we say, the teachers and the families, so that they can give us some feedback on it before we move forward.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, uh, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, uh, as far as the need to ask those students how they feel about, about this. I will, uh, will definitely be looking at that. Will be, uh, you know, asking them how they feel about Edgenuity or a move to Edgenuity. The other thing is, is I gotta give a lot of credit to, uh, both assistant principals, uh, at the high school, Jason Cho and Isaac Matic, because they, they really did a nice job of helping develop this plan with the idea uh, that they, uh, we would really try to get the students involved with staff members. So whether it was the Edgenuity facilitators or, um, the, the teachers of record, we really felt that it was important to have a number of those people involved, uh, because we do wanna maintain that connection. That's, I, I, I agree with you, that's a huge key.
Can I ask one follow-up question to that? Um, so in those groups, when they're meeting with the teachers, would they also have Red Wing High School students um, in their classes in those groups or are they not connected to the students at all?
So that, that was our idea, was that they were going to, uh, uh, meet with those, uh, students in group. And, and so how that will look, I guess that's, that's something we have to continue to work out and, and probably experiment with a little bit. But, um, but yeah, that is an important connection, I, I feel, uh, because I agree with you that, so we keep hearing that from our students about the, the lost connections, especially now that we've been in distance learning. I know, I know you heard that loud and clear, uh, and I, I, I felt the same.
All right, thanks, George. Uh, Jim and then Karsten.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Nemnich, I didn't, I did not have you in school, so I don't think you were there when I was there. But, uh, but, uh, so with that, um, I, I, I really agree with a lot of what's said already by the other three board members. I do like the idea that you're, um, looking at alternatives. Uh, because we are in a different approach during these different times. Things are gonna be different going forward. No, no result of whatever we do, no fault of ours, no fault of anybody else's. It's just the way it's going to be. Um, I think this board, or excuse me, this district should be pushing down the road to have all, totally everybody in school. When that is, if it's tomorrow, if it's six months, I don't know what that date is, but I think our goal, I think, is to have as many kids in school as soon as, as safely as we can be down the road here. With that, um, what I would ask is that, uh, I, I'm glad Nikki kind of jumped on a little bit there. Because I, I was like, whoa, am I missing something here? This is a lot of information that I didn't have any time to look at ahead of time. And all of a sudden, it's being thrown at us and we're getting emails today from nine o'clock in the morning on today from people about it. And I really push, I will push as Vice Chair, push that we get things ahead of time, especially this magnitude of something like this. Not that it's bad, but it's gonna drain a lot of questions and a lot of, um, searching as to what's the right thing. By getting it ahead of time, that's upon us as board members to review it, to ask questions, uh, to bring those questions to the meeting. So you don't have to sit there and read, read line for line for something, cause that.
Right.
I get, I get, I get bored pretty easy when somebody starts reading to me and, uh, on that. Nothing, no fault of yours, Mr. Nemnich, I'm just saying.
Let's be honest, you wanna get to that game and I do too, so.
Were you listening before? But, uh, no, I think realistically, I, you know, on, on the note there, getting people involved, I mean, somebody has to make the decision down the road. I mean, somebody has to bring the plan. Somebody has to take, make the hard work to dive in there and do it. And that's what you get paid for and the others and your, on your team and other schools and other buildings. Um, but let's be honest too, I mean, we're gonna, we're having less and less students down the road. Less and less students means less and less staff, which includes less and less teachers. We have less kids. We can't keep spending, having the same type of resources we have. That's a whole new, another can of worms and, 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 uh, all that. Um, but, uh, I just wanna say thanks for bringing it up here, um, but if we can get things ahead of time, I think will save us all a little bit of heartache and a little bit of, uh, uh, stuff going on to, uh, understand it and ask questions. And, and I like the idea that we're, you've already admitted, but saying, uh, looking at fourth quarter and taking time to look at it and review it and ask questions and get input. So thank you, Mr. Nemnich.
Jim, and I'll just say, uh, thank you. I appreciate the support and, and I, I, uh, I'll take the, uh, fall for the, uh, lack of timing on this, uh, because I didn't present this to, uh, Karsten until Friday. So, uh, we, we, we've been working on it feverishly and we were trying to get some, uh, uh, feedback. So that's, that's, I'll take the blame on that one. So I apologize.
That, I, I'm not looking for blame. You're just hip to be the first one in front of me tonight that, for me to bring it up. So that goes for anybody else down the road. If it's important enough for us to review and consider, should be given to us ahead of time.
I totally agree. Yep, I totally agree.
I can go on and on, but I'm not. I'm done.
Thanks. Thank you, Jim. Karsten and then Arlen.
Sure, hopefully I can add something to the, um, good discussion so far. Uh, first of all, George, uh, Jess and, uh, Jay and Isaac, thank you, uh, for doing this work. Um, as others have said, I think it's innovative and, uh, it's also responding to teacher needs or teacher concerns about hybrid learning. And, uh, it wouldn't be solve all of the issues, but it, you know, eventually could, could help with solving some of them. So thank you for that. I also appreciate the fact that you, uh, did get feedback from, uh, teachers, uh, this morning. And I realize the board meeting is tonight, but, you know, it's been a really quick, um, turnaround time for you as you've been looking at options and that kind of thing. Uh, and also thank you for your flexibility in terms of, you know, listening to feedback from people, making adjustments such as uh, considering it possibly for fourth quarter instead of third quarter. I think that, that's why we ask for feedback and I, I, I can see the, the changes in your plan, you know, accordingly. Um, also, I just wanna emphasize that, um, you know, really a big part of this isn't just for this year. Uh, but as George said, it's also planning for next year. Uh, we've had dozens of kids who chose online charter schools, uh, this year. And, uh, we're very concerned that those kids will continue to choose those next year. And the three hundred and twenty-five kids or so, uh, who are online only this year, you know, could do the same. So I think it's really important for us, even though our goal is to bring back everyone to in-person learning who wants it, uh, we also recognize that we could have dozens or hundreds of kids that want the online-only option next year and for years to come. So we need a really good plan for that, uh, and this could serve as a pilot. And then finally, um, I think, uh, you know, given some, some time to plan and some resources, I think we can provide a better online school than those online charter schools. Uh, we have, uh, first, I think we have some talent and expertise right in our district to do it well. Uh, but we also have the direct interaction with Red Wing kids in those classes and Red Wing adults. I think that's a huge advantage to online schools in other parts of the state or country. And, uh, we can provide that along with sports, prom, and all the other great experiences that, that local schools provide. So I guess in my mind, that's one of our goals, is to get some of those students back who chose the online charter schools uh, and to keep everyone that we have, cause, uh, we can and, and we'll do it better.
Well said, Karsten. Arlen and then Nikki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, talk about alarm today and actually looking at our board stuff that this would be coming here. If it was not intended for, starting here in two weeks, I wish somebody's communication would have said that to people, not only us, but I think staff every thought, thought this was coming up in two weeks. And there's no way in heaven that I would agree to vote for something than change of this magnitude in two weeks. I'm gonna try to keep an open mind on this as we go forward. But I think we have to realize that Edgenuity was the option, as Jennifer said, and certain number, twenty-three or whatever took that. And there were caps and we couldn't do it in elementary or whatever grades. And then time cut off. But we had, what was it, three hundred some people? I don't know if that was, uh, in high school or a cool dist- district on distance learning that opted not to use Edgenuity. And if it's that many people that are in our high school that opted out of using Edgenuity or did not opt to go to Edgenuity, sends a message to me that we better be very careful we don't alienate all those that chose to be distance learning within our district. Um, these are precarious times. Districts from all over seem to be very happy to take our students away from us. That's not the reason why I'm talking here. My goal is to get the best possible education for our students going forward. Um, I'm glad we're talking about it. I'd be very cautious with this even on the last quarter. But I also know we need to go for future years going forward. As you said, this would be a good test. So as you have your future discussions, I hope you ask the idea, is there a way to involve those twenty-three students or whatever is in Edgenuity with our staff coming in only on those to see how it works, as one idea. The other, as it was mentioned, we better survey every single student and parent that's in our online learning, both just online or, and with Edgenuity, if they're receptive to this concept, so we know what we're really dealing with. And third, I'm gonna put a challenge out to you, because this is the wave of the future. More and more of this will be online as we go forward. And you're hearing this from an old guy. But I'm gonna challenge you, do we need, or should we be looking at doing our own online learning option that we can bring students from other districts even into our own district by doing it ourselves here and having a great program of our own? Instead of going through Edgenuity. Yes, there's certain things, but maybe our goal should be, yes, maybe next year it is using Edgenuity, but we want to do this ourselves. Let's be proud of ourselves as a community, that we can step up and do this on our own and do a great product better than what we can find somewhere else. That's the challenge I put out to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Arlen.
Uh, Nikki and then Holly.
Okay. Um, I know I hear a lot, not only just through here, but with the, uh, um, students, the teachers, the parents, you know, the teacher-student disconnection. Um, have we thought about maybe having outdoor classrooms? Um, we could set them up at different parks and have like teachers and staff, you know, have like a day where there's students, you know, this kind of, kind of piggyback off of Arlen's idea creating our own online and bringing kids back. Um, you are gonna nail so many problems right out of the park by connecting these kids with nature. I, I'm not kidding. And we have a lot of community members and a lot of people who are involved with outdoor things, period, and Indian communities. Uh, and with, um, community outreach and education and stuff like that, we're already partnering up with, um, alternative schools to kind of bring some kids out to our greenhouse and stuff like that. So, um, that was just kinda, I just kinda wanna throw that out there for you guys. And I think, yep, two birds with one stone, entice the children back and give that not only teacher-student interactions, but your, like I said, mental health, spiritual, physical, emotional, bam, right out of the park.
Yeah, I, I'll just, uh, I'll just quickly say, I, I, I do appreciate what you said there. And, and I, I know a lot of our staff feel the same way. Um, so the more we, I, I think especially in these times where, uh, uh, holding outdoor events is safer, I think that's a great idea. uh, holding outdoor events is safer, I think that's a great idea. So I, I, I'm, I'm with you on that too. Um, and I know in the fall, we were doing more stuff outside and we haven't been as recently, but, uh, um, but we'll definitely get back into that, I know. So, and I appreciate the, uh, the thoughts you had on that. Yes.
All right, Holly.
Uh, thank you, Pam. Um, I still cannot talk very well, so just bear with me a little bit. Um, so we, we hashed all that out, George and everybody. What's, what's going to happen next Tuesday?
Uh, as far as, uh, what is with students, I, uh, we're, we're going to go, uh, online with, uh, as far as the online students. Is that what you're thinking? Okay. Uh, it'll be as we had done in, uh, first quarter. Uh, and, and moving forward, uh, as far as the online only learners will take classes that they've already been registered for to Red Wing High School.
Are we still expecting teachers to do both platforms then, much like they did in the fall, even though that was extremely difficult and tricky and frustrating?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and, uh, I mean, that's, that's the difficult thing here. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it, it will be harder, uh, with those three groups, you might say. Um, I will say this, we did have a nice discussion with our staff this morning about how, how we can do things, uh, with a focus on our students, in-person students and then, uh, uh, can we do some planning around allowing, I, I guess, giving our staff some, some creative license to uh, maybe do things just a little bit differently than what we did in the, in the fall. We had some talks about that. So, uh, I think, you know, I, here, here's one of the things I think that we got into in the fall that, that, uh, I think a lot of people felt like they had to be online the entire, or live with everybody for the entire eighty minutes. And I think we started to learn as time went on that that's a lot for kids, you know, and, and it's a hard to hold people's attention that long. So I, so we basically, that was one of the things we talked to our staff about is, you know, the in-person kids, you've got them right there, you know, let's, let's utilize that, uh, you know, with the eighty minutes, definitely live, uh, live, uh, lessons and live learning. But maybe with the online, when the, when the students are not in, uh, the classroom, maybe we can, uh, do some different things with the students, uh, where they don't have to be on camera the entire time, that they can go out and then they can come back or they, uh, or they're given some, some other activity and then come back later or, you know, however the teachers do it. I will say this, many teachers, as, as the quarter went on, uh, in the fall, we saw a lot more of that going on. So, I, I'm confident that our teachers can do a pretty good job with this. I, I just know it's hard. It's, it's awfully, you know, here's what happens. It, it's, it's the, it's the, uh, it's the grind, the daily grind with that. And it's, it's, that's, that's going to take its toll. I, I mean, it, it did in the fall and I would imagine it would do it again. Um, but, uh, if sometimes it's nice to have gone through it and then you, you kind of know what, uh, what maybe didn't work so well in, in the, the last time you did it. And maybe, maybe we'll have more success with it, uh, this time around. But I do think in talking with staff, I think if we can give them just the understanding and that they have, they have license to, to do what they need to do to make a creative, engaging lesson for everybody, uh, including those, those online only learners.
Okay. Cause we got a number of emails today after the staff PLC meetings this morning. Not a couple, a lot. There were several good ideas presented to us that I think basically because of time, you didn't get to hear them.
Sure.
Right?
I, I got a number of emails that I haven't looked at yet. I will admit.
So with all of that information that came to us, that came to you, um, I'm still not comfortable with next Tuesday's rollout. I'm not comfortable with having teachers do what they did in the fall. Um, for a variety of reasons, many were, you know, explained to us very much in detail in their emails why it didn't work.
Sure.
So I, I was hoping that today, and I know it was such short notice that some of that would have come back to us, some of those ideas, but they didn't. And so I want some of those ideas incorporated into how the teachers feel supported. And I'm not saying you don't support them, but their ideas are good.
Yeah.
And I want some of that to be enmeshed with what it is we need to do for kids, for families as we go forward. So I don't know what the timeframe is on that, but I think when the board voted this in December twenty-first, and then it was Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody's, you know, going back and the new board comes on. We really have to, and I don't know if we postponed it a week. I don't know if we postponed it two weeks. I don't know what, you know, that motion isn't out there. However, I think it's worth thinking about. So, um, I just want to really encourage you, you know, your team to look at some of those ideas.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, so, uh, uh, so we met with each department, uh, this morning and, uh, we did, uh, gather a lot of information. I just haven't had a lot of time to physically go through it yet. I apologize. Uh, just haven't.
Yeah.
So, so.
Not on your side.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I will say this, that was the reason we, we gave our staff, uh, questions. We wanted them to kind of, uh, give us their feedback, their concerns. Uh, we did talk to them face to face about it today. And, uh, we got a lot of good feedback. So, um, I, I feel good. There, you know, there, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of uh, good feedback that came our way, uh, some things about lunch that, uh, that we hadn't thought before. So, uh, maybe we can make things a little better that way, uh, just a little smoother. Um, you know, uh, there, so stuff like that. I mean, that was good stuff. Uh, there was something that came up about equipment, you know, uh, audio equipment in a classroom that would make it their jobs a little easier. If we can do that, that would be awesome, you know? So, those are the kind of things that we heard today and, and, uh, we're, we're going to keep working towards making that as, uh, uh, a high priority as possible because obviously if staff are getting the support, then so are the students and that's, that's the key.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Well, I appreciate this as, as a starting point for our plans moving forward. Um, and like we had asked, this is an, an idea, an option, um, for fourth quarter and moving forward. But I'd really encourage you, George, along with the, the rest of the administrative team to really continue to talk about and brainstorm other ideas and other plans as well. If you're talking about up to a hundred thousand dollars, um, for facilitators for edgenuity, what else could we do with that one hundred thousand dollars to keep it in our district and, um, provide homegrown, if you will, community-based schooling? What else could, you know, kind of on Arlen's idea? How can we, um, how can we use that money for our own programming? Um, in the times that are tight and our budget, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, um, that's, that's a lot of money right now. Um, and I know it's, it seems like a little blip on our budget, but it is a lot of money. I mean, we opened a whole nother school for this during this pandemic, which was obviously the right thing to do, but you know, we really have to be cognizant too of, of where and how we're spending our dollars and to use that wisely. So I just really encourage your team to, to continue brainstorming and thinking about ways that we can support our teachers, um, to make this plan work. And, um, hopefully this is just a, a short term in terms of the pandemic that we're hopefully coming out of sooner rather than later. But, um, again, I just really want to think about the long-term ramifications too. And, and you've talked about that as well, George, that, you know, this is a springboard for, you know, maybe, maybe future learning and, and, uh, the way of the future. But all right, Holly, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. And then, um, I know that Jess and Chris Palmetier are here to also give us an update. So we should move on. So Holly, I'll give you the last word.
Great. Thanks, Pam. Um, I forgot this part of my question. When does, when does second quarter end officially?
Uh, second quarter ends, uh, this coming Friday. And, uh, yep. So, um, and then, I'm sorry, no, no, I, my dates are all confused. I'm sorry. It's a week, uh, two weeks, uh, it's two weeks from, uh, last Friday. So, yeah.
So eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-second?
Yeah, yep.
So we're bringing kids back into the building with four days left of second quarter?
Yeah, uh, if, if, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I'm guessing if that's, if, if our plan.
Not.
Going, yep. So.
Yeah.
Um, there, there, there's, you know, we started the quarter live or in person and, and, uh, we would be ending in person. So, um, kind of a, a bookend, you might say of, of what we, uh, what we've been doing. But yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Okay. I'm going to have to think about that. Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
All right. So, Carsten, moving on to, uh, Jess and Chris for the fifth and sixth grade teachers.
Yeah, Jess and, uh, Chris will, uh, provide an update about our work with teachers on enhancing hybrid learning for fifth and sixth graders. Um, and, uh, so I'll turn it over to them to give the update.
Okay. See here, uh, good evening, board members. I'm just working, George and I kind of work as a team here and I, George had trouble making sure. I hope this comes up here. Let's see if I'm sharing my screen. And basically, uh, I hope you can see my screen. Um, and Carsten asked me to provide a discussion summary of, of, of grade six conversations regarding improving hybrid learning. Um, first off, I want to assure board members that we meet with our K-six teachers every week in a PLC. Uh, each administrator has a different group that they are in charge of. So there, there is communication. Uh, there is give and take. There are concerns that are expressed with them too. But I, I just want to assure you that we do meet with them and that there is communication. Um, of course, I want to acknowledge, as George did as well, that there is just difficulty period with the hybrid model. Not just limited to Red Wing Public Schools, but across the, uh, the country right now, that it's just a, it's just tough. So, the first thing that we did is, um, we met with our teams, grades five and six, to talk about a designated online teacher from Red Wing. And as I said, we've met two times to discuss having that online person. And that would be with one of our own teachers. And of course, that would allow some teachers to teach and some teach, some students to learn in one platform. That's, that would take the three groups that our teachers work with, the distance learning students out of that. Um, the result would be that sixty-plus students, and that's between grades five and six, uh, would move to having different teachers, Red Wing teachers, but they would have to change teachers. Um, and there's concerns, these were concerns that were expressed by the Red Wing teachers about relationships that have been established that would no longer, uh, be as we would move students to distance learning. Um, one of the typical, uh, concerns that was expressed that we could have those designated online teachers, but it does not solve that hybrid issue as teachers would still have two groups to teach. And of course, we have those two cohorts. That has to do with spacing and making sure that we're not, uh, going over our capacity. So all of these things are, are balled up into this conversation too. Um, if we were to go with a designated online teacher or teachers from Red Wing, it would result in some pretty, for lack of a better term, lumpy class sizes. Um, some, some teachers would have, uh, fifteen students, uh, grades five through six. Some would have as many as thirty-three. And again, that results in the, uh, different capacities at the different sites. Uh, Twin Bluff, fortunately or unfortunately, whatever way you look at it, has some really large classrooms. So we're able to put more students in those rooms. Uh, Jefferson is a much smaller building. So when we talk about moving students, we always have to keep that in mind as well. Uh, we actually talked about edgenuity for grade six as well. And that was, uh, last week George started to talk about it and I thought, well, is that a potential, um, solution for our sixth grade? Uh, and I mean, and this is what I talked with, uh, the grades five and, the grade six teachers today. Of course, they had concerns about curriculum meshing with Red Wing Public School. Uh, we're currently, uh, making sure that, you know, what they're doing in both math and language arts, you know, where are they in their curriculum and would that mesh? Uh, they expressed concerns about eleven and twelve-year-olds managing their time, uh, edgenuity. It's my understanding, I haven't looked into it, but it's my understanding, and this is feedback from teachers, um, that there's just self-pacing concerns with eleven and twelve-year-olds. Uh, we had a case manager sit in on that meeting too. Case manager expressed an awful lot of concerns about how would we negotiate and what's our obligation to continue to work with students in edgenuity. Um, you know, and, and I think it, what it boiled down, it, it certainly, it was a discussion that I think was, uh, interesting. But that would not be a solution this year. Um, so when, when I talked to George about it today, I said, it's, it's pretty clear that the sixth grade, uh, is not interested in, in doing the edgenuity. And then the conversation got to synchronous versus asynchronous. Um, Jess, if you could, I, could you do such a marvelous job of making the distinction between the two? Could you take a moment and talk about asynchronous versus synchronous?
Yes. Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, thanks for, for sitting through our, our conversations that we've had with, with teachers. Uh, so I think that the asynchronous versus synchronous, um, is really a question about the when, not the how. And so when you think about synchronous, we're asking teachers to teach the same class at the same time. It's not how you teach. So for instance, with Nikki's suggestion about taking the kids outside, in synchronous learning, you still could do that. You could say, everybody close your computers and we're all going to go out and find a leaf. And then we're going to come back and we're going to talk about those different types that what you're seeing and who got what. Obviously that's an elementary, um, model in, in what Nikki's talking about, but, um, it's not about being live, it's about when you do the learning. And so I think that that was a good distinction for our teachers and kind of gave them some permission to be creative within the model that you all have already approved. So that, that is, um, one of the distinctions that I think they, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. They, they were looking to get more creative and try some different things as we go forward together and keep, um, brainstorming as a PLC, uh, within that model.
All right. And here's what I would say. I mean, like anything else, I mean, there are, there are some teachers that, that are able to, to strike that balance between more of, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Perhaps say a project-based learning. Uh, and some teachers want to maintain that, you know, constantly, uh, uh, being online for the students, which is all good, but it, but it, again, to me, it, it's not appreciably different from when I walk around my building when we're all in person. Different people are comfortable with different ways of delivering. And I, and I think the conversation to me was very helpful as, uh, part of the PLC, and this is especially in, uh, grade five. Uh, we had teachers continue to talk about and share ideas to find a schedule that works better for students and teachers. And I'm not saying this is a solution, but I'm hoping that it provides some improvement, um, for how we deliver for both staff and for both students. And of course, you know, the, the conversation I have on there, take this info to work on twenty-twenty-one, but it should say twenty-one, twenty-two, because there certainly are things that if, if we were to look back, could we have done this differently? Would have this resulted in a better outcome too? So, again, that's the, uh, summary of the, uh, of the notes from, um, from grades five and six. So I hope.
So really we're, we're, we're not suggesting changing anything. Based on the conversations with the fifth and sixth grade teachers, we are going to continue to brainstorm and utilize our PLC. Um, but really when it came down to it with feedback from the teachers, they had said like, we don't want the designated online teacher. That doesn't, that doesn't change things for us. And we're not wanting to go with edgenuity. That doesn't help us either. Is that fair, Chris?
Yep. And that's fair. And it, and that said, like I, and I, and I, this does not, this certainly is not the end of this conversation. As I indicated to board members earlier, we meet on a weekly basis, uh, bring this up. We try to solve that too. And there's a, you know, the teachers themselves try to work on that as well too. So, um, I am certain there's more to, uh, more to this. Questions and I, Pam, am I supposed to go ahead and say the people in the queue? Am I allowed to do that? I don't, okay. I'm gonna, let's see. So who was in the queue first? Jennifer, your microphone is on and I know Nikki had a, had a question as well too. So.
Okay, I'll go first. Oh, I just want to say thank you. I, I think this really goes a long way. Just, um, the fact that you are. Um, the fact that you are willing to sit down and talk to the fifth and sixth graders and listen, or fifth and sixth grade teachers and listen to um, the experiences they're having and have them involved in the conversation. I think that goes a long way in having them feel better moving forward, even if there are no large changes made. Um, but just to have their voices heard is important and I'm just really thankful that you're doing that and that you'll continue to do that, so thank you.
Well, and and as I said, Jennifer, I mean, I I and and quite honestly, all the fifth and sixth grade teachers are teachers from Twin Bluff, so I know these people well. And right now, we're scattered around the district and I and 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 as I said, one of the. That in and of itself was pretty difficult, just when we moved to this model of neighborhood schools, because as I said, I've worked with those people for the last twelve years. I feel like it was so much easier for me to walk down to the room and hey, say, you know what, I hear you have concerns about this, but. Um, that's just not the same right now. We're in a completely different world, so. Um, but again, we I I can assure you that we will continue to meet with those PLCs. Every Wednesday uh, till the end of the school year, and that's what we've done thus far. Nikki, you had a question as well?
I have many questions. Okay, so um, I wrote my notes down. I don't have your screen up, so it's a good thing I wrote my notes down. Um, in there, it said, we acknowledge the difficulty. Okay, great, but what are you gonna do about it? That's the thing, okay? Uh, that's a question I want you to think about, not only you, but all the rest of the staff. Think about that really hard tonight. What are we going to do? Because I think fifth and sixth grade has reached their maximum point, just by the letters that I read. Um, also, another one would allow some teachers. Um, I fixed the grammar. Thank you, Shelley Buck, for always keeping me on top with my grammar. Um, to teach and some students to learn on the platform, okay, but what does that entail? That just seems more like a statement to me versus a solution. So could you broaden on that for me, please?
That that would allow, okay, and here's here's what that comes from, Nikki, and there could have been a a part two to that. If we would have a designated online teacher, that would allow those students who are online to have one teacher designated just. To meet their needs online. As it currently is, we have our teachers basically teaching with the kids online and the kids in front of them, and that's the. That's the issue, that that's the rub right there, but even if we do that. Okay, because we have cohort A and cohort B, there's always going to be somebody online. Even having that designated online teacher, there's still gonna be somebody beaming into the classroom. That would not change even if we were to do an online teacher.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up for me, but what everything seems to be boiling down to is we don't have enough help. Why hasn't anybody responded to that cry? Because I know if somebody was asking me for help. I would work my hardest to get, and I know that there are some things that have been decided beforehand that I may not be aware of. And and I understand that, but like, here's a plan. Um, again, I'm just gonna say, I'm I am a survivalist. And before I move forward with any plan that has to do with many lives that are in my control, I have to have plan A, B, C, and D intact. Okay, so um, this kind of seems like a more of a um, fifth and sixth grade, just by. You know, the ingenuity and all the things that you went into detail about, this is not really a plan, like the plan for the high school, that's. That's a very viable pa- plan for this year, but this one, not this year, okay? So what about just using the ideas that these teachers keep coming up with? You know, that they're throwing at you, why don't we just in place those and just see how they work? They may work really well and they may not, why can't we bounce something off of that? If if we have time limits, you know, I feel we have time limits and we just, everybody's at breaking point and I really want. Us to come together and thrive, not survive, thrive.
And again, I can, I can say to you that typically the the where where we feel like if if if. If the solutions to me are, okay, the issue really has to do with what are we going to do? How do how do we address the kids beaming into the classroom? I mean, that that really is the rub specific to this situation. You know, and 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 I guess, you know, part of the reason fourth grade looks different from fifth grade, this is, I'm gonna go way down a path here, has to do with space and capacity. I mean, our fourth grade teachers are able to have all of those students in front of us. And Nikki, this is, this is maybe kind of a history lesson for you, but please know that when we started this plan. We wanted sixth grade to be in, but we had to look at our space. And our space just, we could not, we we don't have enough space in the district to have the sixth grade all in. So then we decided, okay, sixth grade's gonna need to look more like the high school. And then we went to fifth grade. And then we thought, okay, they are also going to have to be in this hybrid situation that we keep wrestling with. And finally, we landed on fourth grade that they're able to be all in. So again, I know that that's. I'm not providing to you a solution in what I'm saying here. But what I am saying is that there are some things that are fixed uh, specific to how we can address and respond. And and the typical response that I do get from teachers when we talk about ideas. They do have to do with how are we able to perhaps get an online person in here? The other thing that teachers talk a lot about is what Jess had referenced, what do we do about synchronous and asynchronous? Is there something that we can do within the confines of what we have? Uh, can can we have, and I mean, I, one of the things that I think came out of this is, I I think teachers need to know that. Um, there is some license there to try some things, and even if it doesn't work, I I just try it. If that alleviates or that creates a better situation for both you and your teacher. Um, I had the assurance, all the administrators were on this meeting here too, each in administrator agreed. Try it if that's something you can do, listen to some of other teachers who are having more success with it too. Um, and that's and and that's something that I think has some potential to help out here, but. Nikki, I I, we're gonna continue to keep having these conversations to try to figure out how it's going to get better. I don't, you know, even the conversation that I had today, I wish. What I wanna do is I wanna make sure we're improving. I don't know that I have a one single solution for it. And uh, this keeps me up at night too. I think about this all the time, but I feel like if we can. It's almost, if we can improve things, even if it's incrementally, I I think that's where we're gonna get our best. That's where we're gonna get our best results for both students and staff.
And and what I would, oh, sorry, Pam, is it okay? That uh, and and what I would say too, Nikki, is that this isn't, doesn't look like a plan, because the plan is to stick with what we originally. Forward to the board, so the conversation was, do we change what we originally put out as a plan? Or do we keep going forward and make small improvements with what we have? Like, what is the best of, I I'll quote Mike Pagel, what's the best of the worst situations that we're all in right now? And that might be it for right now, but how do we keep moving forward and changing that within what we have decided to go forward with?
When I think, Chris, you said it really well, I, you know, all we can ask for is that we continually. Have conversations on how we can improve what we're currently doing. It, this is an incredibly difficult time we all find ourselves in, and I do applaud. This ad admin team and all of the efforts and work that you're doing, because I know that this is difficult and there are no easy answers. And you know, hindsight's gonna be twenty twenty and um. God forbid, we have this twenty years down the road, we have learned a lot on what works, what doesn't work, what we can do well, what we need to improve upon. So as long as we continually have these conversations and make tweaks, um, I think we're on the right track. Um, but thank you, both Jess and Chris. Um, Holly, I see you've got your name in the queue, so I'll turn it over to you and then um. If we don't have anything else, I'll I'll move us along in our agenda after I give you again the last word, Holly.
Thank you. Um, so I'm trying to understand when I look at first grade teachers need another online teacher. But fifth and sixth grade doesn't have an online teacher. I'm trying to understand the equity in that. Can one of you explain that to me, like, why? Why that hasn't even come to the table or did it come to the table and it got squashed? I'm not saying it's the answer, but it could provide some reprieve for people. So, hey, we just got the email, we need a first grade on another first grade online teacher, but I have yet to see the email, we need a fifth or sixth grade online teacher.
You know, and that's certainly, well, Carson, I just, just a quick note on that, Holly, and 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 yes, that has, it came up in a fifth grade. Fifth grade meeting today too, but I guess I would say this too, I I want you to know that even when we, when we look for solutions and way to solve it too. Please know that there are some of the, that is not a, what's the word I'm looking for? One teacher put it best that, you know, if if we can, an online teacher would be benefit us best if we can also work on what we're doing with asynchronous synchronous too. That there's some issues that we have to address with how we deliver first. Um, just having an online teacher uh, still continues, like I said, it's still, we're still gonna always have. Even if we have an online teacher, we're not gonna get away from hybrid, there's always going to be that. Uh, online, somebody's going to beam in and that has to do with capacity and space, that won't change.
And if I could add to that, that um, I think Chris said it well, that even if we added an online teacher for fifth grade. Uh, every other or and or sixth grade, every other fifth and sixth grade teacher would still have the hybrid students. So half the kids would be in class and then half would be online, um, you know, for on a particular day, so. I mean, if it if it would solve the problem. It would have been authorized already, because in December, the board authorized hiring extra teachers. So, you know, we can do that, it it just, I think we've come to the conclusion that it really doesn't solve problems, in fact. There are some negatives to it, because we'd have, you know, uh, one or a couple of dozen of students would have to switch teachers in the middle of the year. So there's a big negative to it as well.
Is um, is the extra prep time being offered to these teachers in the current schedule? Or would an extra teacher help with that for teachers to do more preparing, get technology in order? I mean, th- there's multiple ways that you would use an extra teacher. Apart from just sitting in that classroom, being that teacher. So is the extra prep time happening? For teachers so that they have more time to prepare or to respond to kids? Because when you're doing hybrid, you're responding to the kids that are at home, but you're also teaching to the kids live and it's almost impossible to try to. You know, to try to get everybody's needs met, but if you are providing extra time for teachers to. Go over and respond to kids while another teacher instructs or vice versa. And I mean, is that an option for help?
I know that um, you know, the state requires us to give an extra thirty minutes of prep time, uh, if a teacher is in hybrid. Uh, or distance learning, so it's a state requirement. I know, I think it was in December, maybe the first meeting in January, I kind of summarized what each building is currently doing to meet those requirements. Cause everyone does it a little bit differently. And so I know at that time, uh, we were able to provide it. Uh, I haven't followed up uh, in the recent um, past as far as what we're planning to do when we go back into hybrid. Cause before, we're all in distance and so, you know, it's a different ballgame when we move into hybrid, but we still need to provide that thirty minutes of prep time for each teacher in that situation.
So, yeah, so my question, Chris and, you know, Chris especially, cause you're there. You know, are they getting it or are they feeling stressed and pressured in that capacity as well? Could that be a reprieve?
Hiring an extra teacher to allow relief, is that what you're saying, Holly?
Uh, no, to support actually kind of what's going on in classrooms, so if the teachers are not getting that extra half an hour. They need to be. So how is that, how is that happening? And and if it's not, would an extra teacher help supporting those timeframes?
Well, I I I believe we're we're providing that prep, I mean, that that is happening um, across the day, but I I guess I'm. I guess I'm, I I'm wondering here, your 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 comment about another. Another teacher, and I guess I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer for you, cause I guess I have not turned it over, but it certainly is something I could turn over.
Yeah, cause I know it's not gonna alleviate the online. And the in person at the same time with the hybrid, it it's not going to alleviate that puzzle.
So Holly, are you saying to add an extra teacher for every class, for every fifth grade class?
No.
Okay.
But you can schedule it out so that people can get help. I mean, that's not a hard thing to do, it's just like if you schedule out, if teachers say, this is where I need the most help, this is my biggest class. This is my biggest, you know, I have a huge group in this, you know, the kids that show up online and. You know, there's ways that we can help people and it doesn't have to be in a box, but it can be creative. And with, if we've got nothing, we're gonna change. Then this might be something that could help.
Yeah, I think that's something to bring to the fifth grade team to maybe mull over and see how they feel about that, cause part of what we. Did with bringing them the suggestions from the board was, is this something you wanna go with? And they kind of said, no. Um, and then uh, we, it's not that we aren't gonna change anything, it's that we're gonna follow the PLC process and and try different things weekly. Um, small things and not humongous things to try to see if that is helpful.
Yeah, I understand that. You've been doing PLC all year, so that's that's not different. But something has to change or something has to, something has to be added or changed, because right now, what's happening isn't working. They're stressed, it's very stressful, so what else can we do? To enhance it? I mean, everybody said it perfectly, we're continuing to do things to try to make it better. Chris, you're losing sleep, I don't doubt it. Because I'm not even in Twin Bluff and I'm like, oh my God, what can I do? So it's just an option, I'm not saying you have to do it, but I'm saying it's an option.
Okay.
And we can, uh, first of all, we need to verify the plan moving forward at the elementary level for the extra thirty minutes. Uh, you know, during hybrid learning, I'm very confident that the principals will be, you know, providing uh, two and a half hours of that extra prep time on Wednesdays. It's required by the state and so we'll we'll provide it, um, you know, as we need to. Uh, but my guess, it makes the most sense to do it on Wednesdays, unless like Holly suggested, there was an extra staff member who could be rotated. Uh, between classes, if if that could be shown to to make a huge difference without having one person necessarily go to. The six classrooms or twelve classrooms in a given week, um, you know, it's certainly something we could consider. So, but we'll we'll take that back through the the PLC team uh, and admin team to to see how that will work.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Jennifer, you're in that.
Um, just quickly to piggyback on what Holly said, I'm just wondering if she's referring. Also to the possibility of having more classroom support, not necessarily prep time. But um, classroom support to have a teacher or education assistant or someone in the classroom to help. Either be online to monitor the online kids while the teachers with the hybrid, but just another pair of hands. I know there already are some education assistants doing some of that work, but would it benefit the fifth and sixth grade teachers to have some additional hands? Um, with them?
I, are you asking me, Jennifer, what I what I think? I mean, cause I.
I I just think it's an idea to bring back to them. I I, sure, if you if you have a response, great, but I'm I'm just thinking it's it's just a thought to talk to.
Um, I, here's what I can say, and this is just, this kind of perhaps illustrates where we are right now. Um, as of today, or as of earlier today, we were down five Jan Ed EAs to get ready for. Not tomorrow, we're good for tomorrow, I'll sleep fine tonight, we're good for tomorrow. But if I were in this situation next week, Monday, I would really have an issue with this. Um, but as of today, uh, I think we we offered three. We 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 looked, we found three people, uh, and the pool is, let's see, the number of applicants is is very low. And that's three of probably about a total of seven, so we're, I'm I'm confident, I'm confident right now, because it's still four days away, that's why I'm confident. But um, but even that hiring, it is a, it is, it is a challenge right now, Jennifer, and I, if if I could do that, I would provide it. Um, but again, that's kind of a fixed resource at this time.
You know, I do need to add, um, you know, one problem we have is that. Uh, we're not in person learning right now for fifth and sixth grade, a lot of these problems would go away. If we could bring them all into the classroom uh, each day, so that's been. That was, as Chris mentioned earlier, that was our goal uh, throughout the summer, was to try to. To get fifth and sixth graders all in person uh, while we're follow the social distancing guidelines. And so we're gonna keep looking at the that option. And uh, obviously, we want feedback from teachers first. Uh, but um, anyway, uh, there are lots of things that we're gonna continue talking about, cause. We want the best educational opportunity for our kids and the best teaching um, environment for our teachers and staff members.
And I, and at the risk of maybe talking more about what we've been doing, I mean, I I I, we even had a conversation with the other principals. Okay, what if, what if we did bring fifth grade in? How could we even do that? Okay, what if, what if we did bring fifth grade in? How could we even do that? Are there spaces to do that? Which building has spaces? And and here's what I would say, some buildings have the space, Twin Bluff. The other buildings do not have the space. And remember, we're still in neighborhood school, so that has to do with what's your area that you're drawing from. I um, I I, there there's a lot of things that we've turned over, Jennifer, and I, and and sometimes I feel like, oh, my gosh, I said no to that again too. But I, but I can assure you, we are turning these things over, so.
Go ahead, Jim.
I didn't want to let Holly have the last say finally, so I wanted. Just kidding, just kidding. I'm glad to hear you're talking about bringing kids fifth, looking or having the thought about having fifth and sixth grade in person. I think that would solve a number of things. Continue to look at that, because I think that would be a. A beneficial thing for everybody if we can look at fifth, maybe first if six doesn't have the room, but keep looking at it, trying and figuring out. We opened another school, you're right, Chris, is that the rooms are smaller. At Jefferson, but they're good sized rooms, whether or not you can get twenty, twenty-five kids in them, I doubt it, but uh, but keep looking at it, because I think that's. The approach this district should be looking at uh as other area schools are also doing that too.
I can assure you, Jim, that's one thing that we would, if that's something that I could fix. That would, I mean, it would at least fix one grade. It is something that we're turning over and trying to figure out.
I figured you had, but it had to be said, and that's good.
Well, thank you for uh being with us this evening, Jess and Chris, and um, thanks for your continued work. I know this is. Uh, a difficult task and uh we appreciate all the the efforts that you're making, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Anderson, do you have anything else that you'd like to talk about with the return to school plan?
Uh, not at this time unless you have, unless there's some questions.
Are there any questions for the superintendent? All right, seeing none, then I'm gonna move us on to the next topic on our agenda, which is. Our committee assignments for this upcoming year. I sent out. Um, just kind of a draft of what I've come up with based on what people have given me feedback for, um, where their interests lie. Um, I did want to also let you know about when we uh, about the meeting times, because that's also up for negotiation and discussion this evening. We can always um, change our meeting times, but uh we did come up with meeting times last year. Um, based on trying to give you back some evenings. Uh, in the past, we've pretty much been busy every Monday night with committee meetings. And so we uh tried last year to put some meetings back to back prior to a school board meeting. Um, the drawback is that it's a long evening on those committee nights with school board and committee meetings both back to back. The positive is we give you back a Monday. Um, so that's up for negotiation with this board on what you feel is the best for your um, timing. Um, there's one change that I do already need to make on what I brought forward to, when I sent to you. Um, I did put Arlen in the labor management committee and that that is a personal conflict. Um, so he is not able to serve on that committee, so I'd be looking for somebody to um, fill in that labor management piece.
You have me, Anna, down as an alternate, so I would be happy to take that if you want to put somebody else as alternate.
That would be great, Anna. What I was discussing earlier that it's it's helpful to have somebody who's on the negotiations team also be a part of that labor management. So that would be great. Would anyone, um, the alternate would be if Anna can't make it to a labor management meeting, if somebody could fill in for her? Is anyone willing to do that as an alternate? I guess I could. I'd be happy to do that unless, Jim, are you ready to raise your hand on that?
I was, I was kind of getting a little slow at it to trying to see if somebody else would do it first, but uh. You could put me down for an alternate if you'd like, or you want to do it. I have no problem either way.
All right, well, you and I can duke it out. Um, is there any other changes to what I sent out to all of you? Um, I really tried to um, within the the main core. Uh, committees with personnel, operations, finance and policy, those I I look at as the four core um committees. I really um, my first priority was to make sure we had some consistency with history. Um, anybody who was on last year, it's good to have somebody who's got some history on that committee to bring forward. Um, kind of what what led to some decisions or some history of of what um, the committee has done. So that was my first priority. The second priority was that I wanted to make sure we had new board members on every core committee. And then my third um, was to make sure that I honored as many wishes as I possibly could, which I think I'd done pretty good anyway. Um, so other thoughts or changes that I might need to make? I see your name in the queue, Arlen.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think Jim probably has a conflict also with labor management.
Does that be because my uh, wife's a retiree from the school district?
Yeah, and insurance.
Insurance, have insurance to there. Well, she'll have it, yeah, that's fine. I didn't know what, I I just said to be part of it. I had no idea what the inner workings of it is, so. If uh Pam wants to do it, I got no problem stepping aside.
All right, well, we'll just put me down then as the alternate. And leave it at that. Any other changes anybody would like to make? This, and we're just talking committee assignments right now. All right, and then the other piece that we would just need to have a little bit of discussion about is the timing of those meetings. Um, right now, um, that first Monday of the month, it's personnel at three forty-five. Then it goes to operations at four forty-five and then school board. At um, six o'clock. So that's a long evening, but um, let's see. Jennifer, you would have a long night because you would have a back-to-back meeting. I've done that in the past. Um, it is a long night, but it is uh. Um. It is uh, it is doable, but it is a long night. Um, feedback on the timing of those meetings. Finance meets before school board on the third Monday. And then the policy committee um, is uh, the last Monday, that empty Monday. At four forty-five. Well, I shouldn't say empty Monday, we have, we usually have a workshop that night, so it'd be right before the workshop.
Man, I'm sure in the past, the finance committee met on the fourth Monday at four forty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Yep, I had those two switched. Yep, sorry.
So I didn't do whatever, but that, I just wanted to let everybody know when it was meeting.
Yep.
Um, three forty-five is too early for me. Once I go back to um, to um, in-person teaching. So as of right now, it works. For Monday's personnel.
Would operations at three forty-five, Jim, Arlen, Jennifer, would that meet for you if we switched operations and personnel? Would that work if we did operations at three forty-five?
Uh, that, it's not a great time for me either, three forty-five any day, so, but. Whatever, we could, we could switch it off once if Holly gets back to school, we could look at switching it then, but if she's okay for it. The time being, let's let's go with that, with three forty-five on personnel and. Four forty-five. Operations and then once she goes back to school, then I'll be willing, I'll be happy to move it, switch it then if that works, just to give me some time to adjust schedules. Holly, is that okay?
Yep, that's perfectly fine.
Jennifer, what are you thinking about this?
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with that. I was just thinking right now, um, three forty-five isn't the best time, but I can make it work, so it'll be okay.
Okay, Arlen, you have your own race?
Yeah, when I get doing my trucking at three forty-five is pretty difficult for me. The four forty-five that's currently set up works better for me. But uh, I'll work with it if I have to.
Okay. Well, we'll keep those, it sounds like we can keep those times for now and then uh, just uh, put an asterisk behind those times that uh, if they're not working, we'll bring it back to the. To the drawing board and figure out something different. Is that okay if we proceed that way? Okay, awesome. Well, thank you. It is an extra on in this toolboard packet, so you can find it there.
Say, Pam, can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Would negotiations uh cover uh both teachers and. A support personnel, cooks, the the whole group or all the groups?
Uh, you know, that's kind of where I was headed to. Um, I just thought one negotiations team might be um, good. Um, we can always, this isn't a negotiations year for teachers, so um. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, we'll be starting negotiations. Um, I think it's a good idea, actually, uh, to combine some of these together and that would be a logical place. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, yep. I I was looking at it as one, one group for all. And it is a one-year commitment. Um, and then we'll go back to the drawing board again in next January. So, Anna.
Yeah, just one quick question with the negotiations with the meetings to be determined. Is it just based on? Like, is it negotiated kind of as it goes with that, or is it that we need to set a date and time right now?
No, we kind of um, do it as we go with each um bargaining uh group. Um, the other thing about that negotiations team is that um, it is difficult to get all three of us. Um, and all of their group to the table at the same time. So we've kind of operated that if at least two of us can get there, um, and then we can switch off if need be. So um, we can, the three of us could work together on figuring out who could make what negotiations meetings, so. Um, at least that's kind of how we've done it in class and that's worked, it seems to have worked pretty well. Well, I appreciate all of your efforts. I I know that you think you, you joined the the school board and and then I popped this whole uh. Uh, committee assignment sheet in front of you. It's a lot of time and a lot of meetings, but um. Your voice at all of these different tables is so important and so crucial and so um, thank you as a, as a. A board chair for your work and your willingness to serve on these different committees. I appreciate that a lot, as does our community. Thank you. Uh, anybody have any last comments about committees and assignments? All right, then I will move us to uh special education administration. It looks like Sheri's with us um to give us some updates.
Good evening. I forwarded to the board um this afternoon, the announcement from the Department of Education that Sonia um accepted, accepted the position of Director of Compliance and Assistance. Um, we're very proud of her, we're very excited for her. Uh, that is um. A great career opportunity for her. She will be reporting directly to an assistant commissioner. Um, it's, it's a large job. Um, so having said that, um, we did, um, our planning to accept her resignation, her last day will be the nineteenth of January. Um, we do have um. Um, three interested candidates already after posting for one week. Um, so that is um exciting. I really didn't know mid-year um, what the response would be. I also forwarded the boards some information um, this afternoon about the position. Um, because some of the comments I get are, it's turned over a lot. It has, and we know that there are some. Um. Uh, suggestions from the outside um. Um, people that came in last year and did an audit of special education. They made recommendations for us to look at the support for that position. We've also talked about that. Um, I think Pam and I have been in, oh, I don't know. Half a dozen personnel committee meetings um, on that topic and and we're going to con- uh, continue to consider that. So another thing that I um, did is last um, September, I had gone to the personnel committee and I forwarded the board a recommendation from that time. Since that time, we've actually put due process facilitators in place. That role is going very well uh for us. Um, I think the best part about that position is there is a go-to person in every building. And um, when we're training in new staff. Um, or we have um data that we need to collect, having that go-to in each building, I I think could be another direction that we could explore. So we need to do that in the coming months. Um, Kirsten and I have already talked about that, um, different options to bring to you as you form your. Um, HR plan um, for the next school year. Um, and you know, we don't know if we're gonna be in COVID and how many extra teachers we need and, you know, all of that. Um, but we will certainly have that as a part of our plan as well. Um. During the, when I say transition years, there was a point when um, so Redwing was a founding member of the Ed District back in nineteen ninety. Um, but for many years, um, they um, um. Were an associate member, so to speak, um, and had their own director. And then at at some point back in about two thousand and seven, it was decided they no longer needed a standalone director, but would come full. Fully into the education district. During the first couple of years, um, Redwing did keep um, that position on a Redwing contract. Um, each of those people um, only stayed with us one year. We had um, Carol Gordy that was with us two thousand and eight, nine school year, and then Kate Queasley that was with us for nine, ten. Um, then in ten, GCD did uh pick up uh the administrative uh position. And um, as it does with all of its current members except Lake City. Um, Lake City is the last district to join us. Um, they joined us in twenty fifteen and um, through attrition, we will also pick up. Um, those roles as far as hosting the role. Um, that's generally how a cooperative, if you look at Southwest, West Central or um, Scread or Hiawatha, that is generally. How it's ruled out. Um, when we picked it up in two thousand and ten, of course, Kim Chalmers came on. I think all of you will remember Kim. Um, Kim was with us from twenty ten to twenty fifteen. Uh, then Lindsay Woodard, uh, twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, so we started to see longer um, tenures. Um, that was nice. Lindy, Lindsay is still with us. Um, she has taken on a different role um, for a variety of reasons. Um, she's now a speech clinician for us. And uh, um, as you know, they are highly sought after. Then in twenty eighteen, uh, Nicole, um, you knew her as Jack, took the position, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then a position opened here and she moved to that position. So very much loves working in the county and has continued to work with Redwing. Um, which is nice. And then we were able to attract Sonia in twenty nineteen and um. Uh, she was a home run and um, we uh staff have enjoyed working with her. She's put a lot of systems in place. And um, stayed with us a year and a half, but I think when an opportunity um, such as she is taking on comes around. Um, you don't know when that'll happen again. And so um, I I do understand. Um, I thank you for your patience. Uh, the Department of Ed had asked us not to make that announcement. Um, until they were able to make the announcement to the field. And so I do appreciate your patience um, in not getting all of the information you wanted. So I hope, I think, um, oh, as far as I will be covering the position until we get it filled. Um, I do have a number of leadership staff um, that will be helping me, um, but we will make it very streamlined. All of the department meetings are going to continue as is. There's a clerical meeting tomorrow, so staff should not see a difference um. Um, in that. I was in two of the buildings today. Um, so that's kind of that plan. We use Apple Track for hiring, so um, just uh like the Redwings uh, school system does. The beautiful thing about Apple Track, um, and we use that for internal and external candidates. Um, is that everything's tracked, so we know when someone submits, uh, submits or finalizes their application. But I also know when any of our staff um, look at those applications and review them. Um, so I guess I will open it up to questions. I think I covered most of the questions you had asked. And Pam, I wasn't watching the. Comments, so I don't know if someone just came in.
I don't see anyone in the queue yet. Anybody have any questions for Sheri? No. We're very thorough. We appreciate uh, that update absolutely and um, we wish Sonia the best. That's a, a pretty uh, great. Uh, achievement and uh, assignment that she is moving to, so we wish her the best and um. Will look forward to having you keep us posted on uh, next steps for hiring, so thank you.
I will. I certainly will do that and I'll be partnering with Kirsten to determine the interview team and all of that, just like the four questions and and such.
All right, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in our agenda, football has started, so we'll keep us moving. Uh, future workshop topics, there's a list there. Future workshop topics, there's a list there in your uh, board packet. On different topics that we have started to uh, make a list on to make sure that we um, get to them. Are there other topics? And and, you know, if you have some ideas now, that's great, but you can always send them to Carsten or Jim or myself if you've got other topics that we would like to spend a workshop on. The workshop format is really a time for us to get together a little less formally. To talk, to learn more about, to discuss as a group what our goals and our wishes are, um, and to also kind of direct Carsten on uh, different avenues for each of those topics, on what we wish um, or uh, different directives moving forward on those topics. So we have equity, hiring practices, school board practices, budget information, personnel planning and legislative priorities. But we're always wanting to add to that list. And then uh, we, once we have a good list, then we start prioritizing what needs to be talked about first and then next and so on, so.
Madam Chair, I'll just add to that, a good synopsis of that. Uh, it, it's just a brainstorming session for us to sit down and just openly talk about something. No decisions are made. Just to brainstorm and 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 ask questions and lead and get direction or identify direction as to what we want to do, but we don't, we don't make any decisions based upon that topic of that evening. It comes back at a later date to another board meeting, so.
Arlen?
Yeah, thank you. Um, based on the discussions tonight, um, I know other things may be coming through the board as we go forward with online learning, but um, I think maybe it does deserve a good thorough workshop session again on online learning for future years. And I really do believe we should seriously consider running our own program all the way through. Find out what are the pros, what are the cons, what are the obstacles, what are the advantages and I, I, if, if our staff pursues it. So I, it's not an urgent meeting, but I think it's something worthy of discussion if there's enough other things coming up.
Arlen, I think that's a great idea, uh, sooner rather than later, uh, because we want to get the message out to families as soon as possible. You know, for next year, because we want those kids to choose us instead of another online school.
Yep, great idea.
Put her on the list. Yep.
Will you add that to the list, Carsten?
I will.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other ideas right off the bat on things we can add to our list?
Yeah, one thing that um, a board member and I talked about during a one-on-one session would be to add school board pay plan uh, to a workshop uh, session. Instead of approving those pay every year, uh, maybe we should actually approve a plan, so it might be a two-year or a three-year plan, so we don't have to revisit it every year. So um, you know, I thought we could add that to the list too for consideration.
Sure.
That was with me, we were talking and and, and it was, just kind of came up because, you know, what a, uh, when Holly and I got on two years ago, now we have three new ones today uh, on the board, their first meeting, they have to decide pay. So let's take that away from it for the new ones and do it on a different odd number of years, so you can have some time into it to digest it and not just be thrown out there for the first one, your first meetings to, to decide that, so. I think it's a, we, we, we both said we thought it was a good idea to, he brought it up and I said, yeah, that's a good idea to take that off the plate of, for especially new board members.
Great idea. It is awkward, I'll give you that. Any other topics that we'd like to add to our list? Well, as you, as we move forward, as you think about things, jot them down. You can always send them our way and we'll add them to the list. And then um, Jim and Carsten and I will be reviewing that list on an ongoing basis and making those plans for future uh, workshops. Moving forward, our, our first workshop then, tonight is sort of a workshop, but it'll be uh, in February. On the twenty-second. Which happens to be my birthday, so I, I'm hoping for a lot of cupcakes coming my way that night. All right, uh, upcoming meetings. Next Monday, we've got a school board meeting, our regular school board meeting. This Thursday is the MSBA Leadership uh, Workshop, so if uh, you can attend, that'd be great. Also, I, I'm sure many of you have gotten or seen this um, email. Uh, there's an officer's workshop being held by MSBA. So for those of you, um, oh, thank you, Lisa, you're right. Next week's meeting is Tuesday, sorry. But anyway, going back to the leadership workshop, it um, I attended that last year for new officers and I thought it was very worthy of my time. I I did get to attend uh, in person, which was half of the fun, because you got to meet um, other officers from different school districts around Minnesota. But there are three options for those of you who um, are new officers. And uh, they do go into some very general things in the morning, but in the afternoon, very specific to your role as um, one of the officers on the, on the board. So um, if you are interested in attending one of those, they're all in February. There's some evenings uh, or there's an evening option and then two-day options, and it's a two-part series. Lisa can get you um, registered for any of that. If you'd like to attend. Any other upcoming meetings?
Madam Chair, I was in the queue.
Yep, oh, sorry, Arlen.
I believe when we approved the meeting schedule at our last meeting for the upcoming year, we had uh, the board meetings listed, all three of them per month, and they say meeting. I'm wondering if we should put clarity that that fourth Monday of the month, one is a workshop. And present that at a future minute meeting, because right now, the way it is like, from what I recall was approved, it looks like we were having regular board meetings three times a month. On that table that was there. Just pointed out and you can take it from there.
Yep, thanks, Arlen. We should uh, absolutely amend that and bring that uh, back next Tuesday. So next Tuesday is our next school board meeting. All right, any other meetings you'd like to highlight?
Not necessarily a meeting, but I know this came up during the last meeting uh, about whether we continue to meet online or in person. You know, I personally like the, the distance option, but if we are saying that it is safe for our kids to be back in school, I think that um, you know, we have to also follow that same guideline and um, meet in person when it's possible. So, you know, not necessarily that it has to be next week, but just to kind of keep that on the, on the mind.
Yep, thanks, Anna. That is on our radar. Uh, Carsten and Arlen and I worked hard this last uh, fall to try and get that uh, going as well. And you're right, I I believe that we should be meeting in person as soon as possible too. There are a lot of logistics um, that I wasn't even thinking about that kind of come into play in terms of our meetings need to be public. And so it needs to be in a public space. Um, do you know, Carsten, is City Hall meeting at City Hall yet? Are they in a meeting in person?
I have not checked recently, so I, uh, Lisa can double check tomorrow.
Okay, Arlen?
Yeah, I, I want to go on record that I'm not definitely sure we should be meeting in person. I, I think you made it sound like I'm totally on board with that idea. I am not. Uh, I think we've given the option to our students to be in person or or online, depending on their situation, and in my opinion, I, I gotta respect my age and I'm not just sure where I am on this, so um,
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, Arlen. Sorry, I, I guess I was speaking for myself, but I, what I meant is the three of us were looking at those options um, to perhaps do that. But logistically, we have to be able to distance six feet, we have to be able to um, uh, videotape it and and or livestream it. We have to be able to um, provide an audience. And so logistically, until this, this, I mean, it, the city council chambers are really great to be able to do that when um, if we could social distance there, but we can't. Um, so we've looked at options for maybe being on the stage of Hubda Hall. Um, we even had um, the, the six-foot-long stick out there to measure. So anyway, we are working on, on that, but logistically, it, it seems to have a lot of uh, blips in that. Holly and then Lisa.
I, I was just gonna add, um, I'm not in favor of meeting in person right now due to um, my medical stuff that's going on. And I do know that City Hall was meeting online tonight, virtually. So they're still virtual. I was just gonna add that.
Thank you, thank you. Yes. Lisa, were you gonna share that same thing?
Yes, I just looked up the City Hall and they are meeting right now, virtually.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we will continue to um, think about that and look at options. Um, Jim and then Nikki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Anna, thanks for bringing that up, because I was gonna hit the, hit the nail with the same head or hit the, whatever. I was gonna hit the same issue. I, I, I think we need to have that dialogue and I asked the superintendent to research uh, the big nine in southeast Minnesota, who is um, what other other school districts are doing right now, and what are their plans? I've taken a punt, I just happen to know a school board member in Goodyear, they're starting to meet later this month in person. Their school's gonna go everybody back in February, and that's mainly because of the school construction there, that's why they're pushing that back, but uh, that's just one school. I'm not saying we have to be, I get the idea that I think, I don't think we should be meeting right away, but I think we should be striving towards getting, meeting that goal. Because like, just like Anna said, uh, our kids are going back. We should at least have that dialogue, and I think at the next meeting, if we could, we'll add that conversation for a topic to see what other schools are doing then, so. We'll talk about tomorrow.
Yeah, and just as an FYI, uh, Lisa's already uh, compiled information from the other Goodyear uh, county schools, as well as a big nine school, so that, that'll be posted on Wednesday.
Great. Awesome. Nikki?
I was just gonna make a comment at this time, as I am going through a kidney stone at this point. I would like to stay, I would like to stay virtual. So I can attend.
Right, yeah, so I mean, there are so many uh, you know, things that we need to consider uh, moving forward, so it'll, it'll be uh, uh, top of our minds moving forward. All right, with that, we've come to the end of our agenda, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Anna, so moved.
By, uh, motion made by Anna, seconded by Holly, and then we'll uh, have a discussion. All right, we'll start uh, the roll call vote with Holly.
Aye.
Jennifer?
Sorry, aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Arlen?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so we are adjourned seven zero at eight oh three.
Forgot Anna.
Did I forget Anna? Oh, see, Jim, that's why you're good to uh,
You got to take your shoe off to count all these people.
I have two As in a row, Arlen and Anna. Sorry, Anna.
Good night, everybody.
At eight oh four.
Night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.